The Tuesday, August 13th, 2019 meeting of the Eden Prairie City Council is now called to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, and just a brief announcement about open podium policy, which the city council offers its residents. Open podium is an opportunity for Eden Prairie residents to address the city council on issues related to the Eden Prairie city government. Before each council meeting, which the council meetings are held typically on the first and third Tuesdays of each month, the open podiums are from 6:30 to 6:55 in this council chamber. If you wish to speak at open podium, please contact the city manager's office at (952) 949-8412. By noon of the meeting date with your name, phone number, and subject matter, that helps us be prepared for you. If time permits, after scheduled speakers are finished, the mayor will open the floor to unscheduled speakers. Open podium is not recorded or televised. If you have questions about open podium, please contact the city manager's office. We're going to begin this evening's meeting with a subset within our regular meeting of the HRA, which is the Housing Redevelopment Authority.
I knew that.
I probably should have written that one out. Housing Redevelopment Authority. Some cities have that as a separate body. In the city of Eden Prairie, we have the city council be the HRA as well. So I call the HRA, which is the Housing Redevelopment Authority, call this meeting to order, and I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes from our last HRA meeting, which was held back on April 2nd, 2019. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the HRA minutes from April 2nd, 2019.
Sir, second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we just have really one agenda item. Mr. Getchow.
Yes, thank you, members of the HRA. You may recall that you have approved a housing development project by Common Bond called Trailpoint Ridge near Eden Prairie Road and Highway 212. You've also held a public hearing and approved the use of tax increment financing for this project. This is simply an action item needed by the HRA to approve the TIF agreement for that project based on the overall development project you've approved and the actions that you've already taken to approve tax increment financing for this affordable housing project.
Any questions or comments any council members wish to say or ask at this time? If not, is there a motion?
I move to approve the tax increment financing agreement for Trailpoint Ridge.
Trailpoint Ridge, yes. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, oop, Mr. Russo.
No, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
No, no, go ahead.
I'm kidding. I got you. I'm messing with you now. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Mister Russo, is this the after or after after something else?
No, I just, before you close the meeting, I'd just like the minutes to reflect that all but one member of the board is present tonight. Mister Aho is not present, but all the others are, so that the minutes reflect that.
Excellent. Oh, I needed to take a roll call vote on the very beginning.
But this took care of it. We just kind of, yeah.
Made two mistakes tonight on HRA.
We don't meet often.
This is not going to happen again. Is, now, anything else then? Is there a motion to adjourn the Housing and Redevelopment Authority meeting this evening?
So moved.
Sir, second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Moving on to the regular city council meeting, part of our evening agenda. One of the fun, positive parts of our meeting when we get these opportunities are proclamations and presentations. And this evening, we're really excited again. I think we lead the state. We'll find out in a moment, but you can tell us we do, in the Green Step program. So Diane McEwen, Mister Getchow, do you want to say anything else by way of introduction?
Mayor, I will introduce Diana. She does kind of all the work related to Green Step Cities statewide, so I'm guessing she's probably at a council meeting every night of the week. But she will do a good job of providing you with an overview of the Green Step program and the recognition we're receiving tonight.
Great.
Mayor and council members, good evening. My name is Diana McEwen, and I work for a nonprofit called Great Plains Institute, which is one of the partners of the Green Step Cities program statewide. Thank you, Mister Getchow. I don't go all over the state. Actually, I do some work over the state, but mostly I focus in the 11-county metro area, which is no small feat. It's half the state's population. And we have about 125 cities statewide that are Green Step Cities. And this year, the city of Eden Prairie reached the echelon of that program, step five. You are joined by 12 other cities, so there are 13 cities that reached step five this year. I actually have with me, not only your, you got step four and step five. It's kind of complicated to explain. You have to reach step five each year. You have to do it because it's about measuring your impact. And so each, you know, once you get step four, you're step four, but you, each year you have to make step five. So I have-
And this is our third year for step five.
Yes, so I have 2017, 2018, and 2019 step four blocks for you to put on your board that you have already, and then your first step five block. So I have a whole big glom of blocks here. But I want to say that step five is not easy. You know, when we were working, I was there at the very beginning, back in '07, '08, when we were developing the program, and we developed it with three steps. And when we got closer and closer to that, and some steps, some cities, some of your neighbors were really pushing, like, we want to go to the next step. We were trying to figure out, for step four, do we just add more best practices, or do we go deeper? And we decided we needed to go deeper. And so it's a high lift, it's a really heavy lift to decide what you want to measure in step four, and then in step five, you have to keep consistently either lowering or increasing, depending on what the metric is, that level. So, you know, it's a really huge kudos. It's a big step, you know, measuring impact, not just like, we did this thing, but we're doing it and we're really making an impact. So really grateful to be here and honor you and your community with the step five. It's, like I said, only 13 cities statewide reached this level this year, so.
Can you give one example for our residents of what a step five city has accomplished?
Well, you know, there's a number of different metrics that you can choose to measure. You can measure greenhouse gases. There's all kinds of different things that can be measured. And I didn't look specifically into your report. I'm not the one that reviews them. I just get the glamour job of getting to deliver the award, and I have a goal of getting it every single local paper in the metro, so thank you for that. So, you know, it's really about looking at how to increase renewable energy purchased by the city, or decrease greenhouse gas emissions, or, I mean, it's something really significant, you know, impact on water, et cetera. It's really looking at the impact and what you're doing. So, you know, it's very exciting. What you're doing is incredible.
And we had our 204015 program, and we have our sustainable Eden Prairie. So just let people know that these are things we were doing because we're really environmentally and ecologically conscious here, and, by the way, that qualifies us to win these awards. And how many of those 13 are in their third year of step five? I'm not competitive, but I'm just curious.
I'd have to go back and look. I'm not sure.
Just tell us. Probably we're the only one.
You're probably the only one.
Yeah, we're probably number one.
And I won't mention any neighbors. This is a competitive part of the metro area. So, yeah, there's a lot of-
It's bragging rights at some of these mayor meetings I go to.
That's right. You guys have been way above and beyond, and I just also want to thank you. I was able to plug in my electric vehicle out here when I pulled in, and I just actually finished working on a project with 28 cities statewide called Cities Charging Ahead, helping cities become more EV-friendly. And so I'm really excited about, you know, steps moving forward. And you guys were ahead of the game, for sure, on that, so congratulations. So we like to do a picture. I don't know if there's a photographer. I have my phone. We like to tweet and do social media. This is kind of unusual because it's this really weird block, but then I've got this too. Is there a chance that there's somebody in the audience that would use my phone and take a picture?
I'll take it.
Well, she could. I like to, I'm like a tweeter, so.
Awesome.
Thank you, congratulations. Congratulations to you all. There you go.
I do have a quick question. One of your, are you going to do a level six for us to start?
Oh, my lord. Yeah, I'm not even going to mention that to the committee because it's a lot of work. I think, you know, because step five is, again, continual improvement, I'm not sure where we'll go with a step six or anything. I don't, I'm not sure. And I should just say, next year, 2020, we'll be celebrating 10 years of Green Step Cities, and we're trying to figure out how we want to celebrate that, but it's exciting. It's been a great program.
Diana, I have one question. I got confused. You say one time step five, the first time we're getting, or we're getting third time we're getting?
This is the third time you've gotten step four, because that's also each year you, you know, make your metrics. So this is the third time getting step four. I believe it's your first time getting step five. I might be wrong. Rick's shaking his head.
I think we've had it before.
Yeah, we got it at least a year ago.
Yeah, Rick's, so the blocks that I brought were three step fours and a step five, so.
Yeah, I think it's second year, step five.
And maybe, maybe somebody picked up the step five block at the awards ceremony last year?
I believe so.
Yeah, yeah, so my mistake. I have, I just brought what I have.
No, it's okay.
So count twice, three and two. Three step four and two step five, right?
See, you're into the numbers, so that's why you're, like, doing so well.
Well, which is compared to other cities, how we are doing.
You guys are really in a class of your own. There's not very many cities that are at your level.
You're talking about Eden Prairie, right?
Eden Prairie, yes.
Okay, I just want to make sure the residents.
Thank you.
Eden Prairie is at the highest level of sustainability, so.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
And at the end of the day, you know, obviously, words are nice, but it really is about doing what's right for the environment and, and not just leading the way, but actually making a difference, so. And this is not just this council. We've been at this for, well, the 24, three years I've been involved, so I'm really proud of what we've done environmentally. All right, our second presentation is to accept a bike fix-it station donation from Shields. Mister Getchow.
I will turn this over to Mister Lothammer.
Thank you, Your Honor. Councilmember, as you know, we have businesses in our community that are very community-minded, and one I've been working with recently is Shields. They came to us and wanted to donate and have put into the park system a bike fix-it station. We've added that picture into your packet. It's pretty substantial and very solid, and it really helps with our residents and also commuters, as they're in need of, it might be a little bit of air, or it might be a certain wrench to help them fix their bike along the way. And so we really appreciate their contribution. And Jason and Allison from the store are here tonight to tell you a little bit more about their community efforts.
Welcome.
Thank you. We are very excited to be here. Thank you for accepting our donation. We feel that that is going to be very helpful to the community. We are very excited to expand in Eden Prairie next year already, and hopefully we can have more things like this happening and better partnership with the city.
That'd be great.
Thank you.
And just a quick comment or question that this will be located? Is it at the new historic water tower that's, is that the one? Or I know we have several possibilities.
This is actually at Purgatory Creek Park, and it's been put into place just across from the, when you exit out of Caribou, if you kind of drove straight in, that's where you'd find it.
Nice. Excellent spot for it. Real popular.
Ma'am, so this is a permanent station, or you do only, like, Saturday?
It is a permanent station.
Permanent station.
Yep. So there's a spring slab that was poured. It's permanently in and has all kinds of tools to fix the bike. There's air pumps, some bars to put your bike up there if you needed to do any kind of tune-ups, anything like that.
Be recognition, I hope, for Shields that this was donated and-
It does. It says donated by Shields, yep.
Fantastic. We appreciate this very much.
Thank you.
Yes.
I just want to say something. You mentioned you're excited about opening next year. We're really excited also. Thank you.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks. And our third and final acceptance of a donation tonight is from the Sampson family. Oop, we do need a motion on Shields. Thank you so much. Is there a motion to accept-
Move to adopt a resolution accepting the donation of a bike fix-it station by Shields.
Sir, second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, thank you so much again. All right, Mister Getchow.
Again, I'll hand this over to Mister Lothammer.
Your Honor, council, if we go back two Mondays ago, some of you were there with me that night, along with our Parks Commission members, to celebrate the 10-year anniversary of the Eden Prairie Art Center, along with members of the Sampson family, some of our previously Art Center instructors, and those that had donated as well in the past. And the Sampson family has really been a great supporter, in addition to donating the building. Over 10 years ago, they've also given us contributions throughout that time that have helped us to continue to improve the facility. And so tonight, no exception, they have committed some dollars to help us move forward with some more equipment, so recognize that.
That's excellent. Anyone here tonight from, okay.
No.
We really do deeply appreciate the Sampson family, and I did have the opportunity, we could go Monday, along with Councilmember Narayan, to be at the 10-year celebration of the donation of the building, and met some of the family members, and just really wonderful people, and their father and husband, Roger, who had been the impetus behind building this building to be donated someday to the city. What a legacy statement for him, so. Is there a motion to accept this donation this evening?
Move to adopt the resolution accepting the donation in the amount of $9,606.03 from the Sampson family to go towards Art Center equipment.
A second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? All right, thank you so much again to the Sampson family. Is there, well, before we actually move to approve the agenda, any items to add or question or pull? I just have one council member report I'd like to add in there. So is there a motion then to approve the agenda?
Move to approve the agenda.
Sir, second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Minutes, we have two. If there's, are there any questions about either one, either the workshop or the meeting held back on July 16th? If not, is there a motion then to approve them both? By any one of the three of you?
Move to approve the following city council minutes. A council workshop held Tuesday, July 16th, 2019. The city council meeting held Tuesday, July 16th, 2019.
Sir, second? Second. Again, anything to question or correct? All those in favor then say aye. Aye. Opposed? All right. Moving on, we have the consent calendar. Are there any items anybody wishes to pull temporarily to question or actually remove or find out more information about? Then is there a motion to approve items A to M? And I see all these yellow packets. Were there additions that were after the meeting that we need to be alerted to, or no?
Mayor, the golden rod was related to just updates to the HRA Trail Ridge Agreement.
Got it.
Not to anything on consent.
Nothing with consent. Okay, so is there a motion to approve items A to M on the consent calendar?
Move approval of items A through M on the consent calendar.
Sir, second?
Second.
So again, any, anything else you'd like to find out more about? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, moving on to our first public hearing, which is our park and open space zoning district change. Mister Getchow.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. You may recall that recently, last year, I believe, the city created a new zoning district, parks zoning district, because actually the parks in Eden Prairie have a variety of actual zoning district designations. So I think the feeling has been, for a number of years, that we would like to clean that up, and we would like to provide for a uniform district that's called a park district, that would have uniform setbacks, height, parking requirements, and it's something that we think actually strengthens our parks and the designation of our parks. Maybe without getting too far into it, our senior planner, Beth Novak Krebs, I think is going to provide a brief presentation for you. This is an item that went to the Planning Commission and was recently unanimously approved by them to be forwarded to you, so that you can take that action to actually change our 35 parks, our 15 conservation areas, and our one special use area to a, all to park zoning.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I just want to give a very brief presentation of the park rezoning project, why we're doing it, what does it mean, and what has the process been so far. So the 2030 comprehensive plan guides the city-owned parks and conservation areas as park and open space. And so our zoning has to be consistent with the comprehensive plan. And as Rick mentioned, our parks are currently, the zoning is all over the board. Some are residential, rural, public, commercial, industrial. And in 2017, we created the park and open space zoning district. It established permitted uses, setbacks, and regulations regarding parking and lighting, et cetera. So now we're in the process of rezoning the city-owned parks and conservation areas. As Rick mentioned, there are 35 parks, one special use area, and 15 conservation areas, and I think it's around 547 individual parcels and PID's. So it's really just providing consistency, consistent regulations, and all the parks would be zoned the same. It doesn't involve any physical changes to the parks or any of the park boundaries. It will not impact any of the adjacent private property owners, and the uses are restricted to only those that are appropriate for a park or conservation area, which really helps to further ensure that these will remain park and conservation areas for a long time to come. So on June 3rd, we held a public information meeting with the Park Recreation Natural Resources Committee or Commission. We sent out notices to every property owner that lives within 500 feet of a park or conservation area. So we sent out around 9,000 letters. About 100 residents came to the meeting, attended the meeting, and had questions about, what is this? How does it, how does it impact me? How does it impact my property? On July 22nd, the item went to the Planning Commission. We sent the public hearing notices to the same 9,000 residents. We also, at that time, notified them of this public hearing tonight. I think approximately 35 people, I think, came to the Planning Commission meeting. And tonight, we have the, the public hearing for the first reading. We also posted on our website some maps for the residents. The most current one we did was a map showing the existing zoning of all of the parcels that were proposing to rezone. Then we also posted the, the standards of the existing zoning and the standards of the zoning for the park and open space, so that residents could compare the two. So after I'm done checking, double-checking, and triple-checking all 547 PID's to make sure that I don't make a mistake, then we will come back for a second reading. Thank you.
I'll speak last, so go ahead, Councilmember Nelson.
I assume that conservation areas will still remain conservation areas with all the things that pertain to them? And does this include outlots?
Yes, the conservation areas will remain conservation areas, and yes, it includes outlots, lots, lots that have meets and bounds descriptions, so there's a variety of different ways that some of these parcels are described. Thank you.
If I could clarify that, because we've had some conversation at the council table about outlots in the community. This is only publicly owned property that is currently designated as park or open space. So if an outlot is currently designated as a park or an open space area, it's part of this rezoning, but not privately owned outlots, not necessarily tax-forfeited outlots that have not been designated a park or open space. So we don't want any members of the public to be concerned about impacting their property if they happen to own an outlot.
Right, it's just publicly owned. And we did, we did have questions about, you know, outlots behind people's homes. Would this impact those? And no, it does not impact those privately owned outlots.
So, thank you. When I was reading through this in the packet, for me, it seemed that this could only have positive impacts on contiguous neighbors, because what had been next to them as a park, zoned however, whatever some of these are, RM 6.5, R1 9.5, I mean, I guess in theory that might have someday for a future council maybe made it easier, since it's sitting next to an R1 9.5, and now this is zoned, that in theory, some future council that wanted to maximize money or something and got rid of some park line, this, this almost cements it more, that what they believed to be a park is a park. So I think this should add tremendous confidence and relief to people, as opposed to adding any concern or fear or something. And council, this is a public hearing. I'm going to open it up. Are there any questions or comments prior to opening it up to the public? So this is a public hearing. Anyone in the audience that would like to address the council this evening on this All right, council, what is your pleasure here? Do you want to, somebody make a motion?
Move to close the public hearing and approve the first reading of an ordinance for a zoning district. District change from rural, public, R1 13.5, R-9.5, RM-6.5, RM-2.5, and IGN Office and Community Commercial to Park and Open Space zoning district.
Sir, second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? All right. Second public hearing this evening is Arby's. Mister Getchow.
Mayor and council, thank you. The Arby's, the one Arby's in Eden Prairie, near the Eden Prairie Mall, is proposing a remodel. They are proposing some changes to their facade and their building elevations, their parking lot, their landscaping, their interior, their signage, there are quite a bit of improvements that they are making. I believe the applicant is here tonight to provide a presentation for the city council on their planned remodel and upgrade to their property in Eden Prairie, and the staff and the applicant can answer any questions that the council may have. In addition to holding a public hearing, the action requested would then be to approve a development agreement with Arby's.
State your name and address. Thank you, welcome.
John Walberg with Arc Vision Architects, 1950 Craig Road, St. Louis, Missouri. Just want to say good evening, Mayor and city council members. Let me figure out how to work this thing. Okay. So he did a pretty good summary of the project. It's an interior/exterior remodel that we're-
John Walberg with Arch Vision Architects, 1950 Craig Road, St. Louis, Missouri. Just want to say good evening, Mayor and city council members. Let me figure out how to work this thing. Okay. So he did a pretty good summary of the project. It's an interior/exterior remodel that we're trying to bring up to their current standards. Interior consists of a dining room remodel, restroom remodel, making the restrooms fully ADA compliant. You don't really get into the back of a house too much, other than the drive-through, front counter area. On the site, you can see there's quite a lot of parking there. We're going to, we are overparked. We have plenty of parking. We're actually going to be eliminating a few in order to create some green space, which I'll show you later. I need to look at that on here so I can see it better. That first sheet is a demo showing the existing site plan and kind of the areas that we're removing. If you switch over to the second sheet, it's the proposed site plan. You'll see we're adding in a ADA-compliant pedestrian crosswalk out the rear that connects into a proposed, I think it's being planned or built at this moment, pedestrian system that ties into the entire mall. So that's, that's going to be part of this project. We are adding a bike rack as well, so customers can park their bikes and have lunch or dinner. We're adding, as far as the site goes, we're adding a canopy over the drive-through menu board, give customers a little protection from the rain when they're ordering. Landscaping, we are adding quite a bit of landscaping, several trees, a lot of shrubs and plants all around the lot, really, and a general refreshing of what's already there. But we are adding quite a bit as well. The building itself, you can see here, I've got a photo of the existing with the proposed below. We're going to be eliminating these barrel vault, arched entryways, and all the glass that goes with them, and squaring it up a little, giving it a little more modern, up-to-date look, along with new signage. There will be a kind of a canopy or eyebrow canopy running around the entire building, that red band that goes around. And that also ties into some of the entry canopies that you'll see on some of the other Materials essentially are, we've got a stone wainscot running around most of the perimeter with a couple different colors, a brick, a beige, and a, I guess, a cream color, and then a brown color. This is the main entry side elevation that you're seeing here. Again, you're seeing where we're squaring off that vaulted tower, I guess, for lack of a better word, getting rid of all that glass and kind of reining that in a little bit. And the rear elevation, similar to the other elevations, adding a lot of brick and stone. It's currently, the, the building is brick, and we're replacing all the brick because it's deteriorated, in areas. Some of it's still good. That's the gist of it. There are, I believe you were handed a revision that we made prior, you know, earlier, where we're expanding the, we're pushing the menu board back a little bit away from the building and creating a little additional green space and landscaping. There should be a site plan and an updated landscape plan with that. We'd like to get that changed as part of the approval, if possible. I do want to mention one thing that came up today while I was speaking with the client about the overall budget for the project. They're about $250,000 over what they normally spend on a remodel like this, so they're seeing a lot of extras like the, the tie-in to the pedestrian crossway walk. I know we're trying to get approval for all this tonight. I'm just want to address the concern that the project may be in jeopardy when we, if we have to do all of this stuff, but I'm still here to get approval for it. But I just wanted to bring that to your attention. It's a very expensive remodel.
So are you suggesting the pedestrian walk may, you may have to eliminate that to get the cost down?
We may have to pursue eliminating it to get the cost. But that, again, we'd have to go through proper channels, whatever that is. I don't know what that route would be. I'd have to talk to Beth, I believe, about that.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Am I right in assuming the footprint is, the building is not changing?
Footprint is not changing.
Okay, where's the cost run-ups that you're seeing that, that's over, what, $250,000 as far as, as the architect on it? Where are you seeing where they're having some pushback on?
A lot of it is in the pedestrian crosswalk that we mentioned. A lot of it is in the materials, too, the, the brick, which we assumed, we have to go back with the masonry, all around the building. So there's a lot of extra costs over and above what they typically spend on the remodel for that.
Can you point out, do you have a map of that? Or, I mean, I'm looking at this one, I'm just not sure where I'm seeing the pedestrian crosswalk.
Oh, yeah.
Is that an overpass?
I'm sorry?
Is that like a pedestrian walk as an overpass?
No, it's a crosswalk, across the, it goes across the mall entrance drive. There's an island in the middle.
Yeah, if you could point that out, then.
Yeah, yeah, sure. Let's see here. Does this have a laser on it? It's, does this have a laser pointer? Oh, there it is.
Yeah, I see it. It came out one time.
We can't see that.
It was there for a second.
You probably have to.
Without hitting Mr. Rosso's eyes, yeah. Blinding our attorney in his last months of, I'm just.
I can't see it on the screen there. That's it. Okay.
Oh, use the mouse from the computer is what we were just recommending.
You can do it over there.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry about that. It's this area right here. So we've got a crosswalk coming across here, across our drive-through lane, out to the perimeter drive with a sidewalk that comes around. And then we have a crosswalk across to the island, and then another crosswalk over to this corner here.
Thank you so much. We'll definitely address that, I'm sure, in comments momentarily. Any questions from council of the proponent prior to opening up to anybody in the audience to participate?
One thing I do want to make sure is what doesn't get cut is, and I assume the city has some say over this, but the things on top of the building that are shielding the air conditioning and all that kind of stuff that currently are just sort of sitting out there, that we're trying to do on all buildings. So that should not be an area to be cut. And for that matter, we sort of insist on flowers, too. At least the beds that you currently have.
Yes, we are adding the screens around all the rooftop units, and that is currently.
But you're saying some things will have to be cut.
Well, that's up to us.
That will not.
Yeah, Mr. Getchell, do they have to?
We'll have that chat.
Yeah, well, maybe, I just, at some point, I want to know from staff, you know, how we handle that possibility, because once it's approved, it's sort of approved.
So do you want to speak before we have the public hearing, or would you like, it's up to you? If you have a question, though, that would be helpful.
Yeah, I have a question. So in terms of energy consumption, is that decrease or increase by this modification?
It should be decreasing. The lot already has LED lighting for the lot lighting. We are switching to LED lighting on the interior as well, so that should decrease. We're getting rid of some of that tall glass and that, the tall ceilings as well, which should reduce, you know, we're putting in a ceiling at about eight or nine, I think nine feet. So we should be reducing HVAC loads and all that, too, so.
Anything in the water area that you'll be reducing or saving?
No, we are not touching the water.
Notting the water. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any, we can ask questions afterwards when we close the public hearing as well. So, okay, we'll open it up to the public, and if we need to bring you back, we will. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
This is a public hearing. Anyone in the audience wish to address the council on this issue tonight? So council, my recommendation would be that we just close the public hearing for now, and then we'll pass the rest of the motion afterwards.
We'll have to close the public hearing.
Sir, second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Let's have some conversation about this. I've got some thoughts, but anyone want to start? Councilmember Freiber.
One thing that concerns me a little bit when I hear that we're $250,000 over budget. We obviously want things to move forward, and we want to be very business-friendly, but, and find some kind of a middle ground if need be. I'd be interested to find out if there's, if a lot of this $250,000 is tied up in external finishing, if there's some alternatives that could maybe work, some middle ground itself on there, because, you know, nobody wins if the project can't go forward. I mean, you're not going to be happy if your site, and that's going to be jeopardized, how long you want to even stay there. We want us to keep you happy. You're a great part of our community. So if we could maybe look at the aspect of, go ahead.
Maybe give your name.
Dale Rumel with Crest Hill Development, third-party Arby's representative. We coordinate all the remodels for Arby's. Most of the cost is, 95% of our remodels on the outside are done with EPAS. We make a look, it's a, between a pattern of grooves cut in and a brick pattern on most of them, which is a lot cheaper than putting all the, the brick on the buildings and stuff all the way around. That's where the big cost overrun is.
And you said 90% of it's right there?
Yeah, probably. Because it's, that's, like I said, most of our buildings, now, some have brick on them. If there's brick existing that's in good shape, we leave it and incorporate it in. But with this one having, some of the brick being painted, a lot of it's falling off already, it's in decay around the building. So when we're going up, normally, a lot of, like, the drive-through tower that goes up, that would be on, most of our remodels would be in EPAS material going up in the brown color, same color pattern pretty much is what's on this one, but just a different material that's in it. It's a lot less expensive to do the EPAS material work, even in the brick pattern, if we were somehow able to do a brick pattern over the whole building. Most of the people that see the remodeled ones, until they get right up next to the building, don't realize that it's not actual brick that's on these buildings, it's on the different, we don't do the whole buildings in brick on the original remodels. It's parts of it are brick, parts of it are the smooth EPAS, and part of it is an EPAS that has the grooves in it to give us the different dimensions and the different heights and stuff. But yes, that is the majority of the cost overrun. And then the other cost overrun is with having to create that whole sidewalk and crosswalk in the back of the lot there is a.
So you're saying that's 10%? That's roughly $25,000, and the other's going to be $225,000?
Yeah. Yeah, I, I don't have the exact numbers, but.
Understood.
Yeah, but that's, that's where the cost overrun is running into. Like I say, Arby's has, like everybody else, guidelines on what they want to spend on a remodel. And I've had some where they've okayed some, and I've had some where they've just walked away from because of the, the return on the project doesn't fall within their scope of things. I'm not saying that they're walking away from this one even if we can't change anything, but there, there is always that concern that somebody higher up the food chain than what I am is going to say that's just too far out of the range of what we can recoup in the timeframe that they want to recoup everything.
So I'm taking it's not their way or the highway?
No, 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 no.
I think that you're open to as far as the middle ground if it, if it makes sense to staff to be able to work with you on that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I just, when you were saying about the cost overrun.
I appreciate that.
That's why I just wanted to let you know that it's, you know, because the insides are pretty much the inside. It's, it's a remodel of the inside, too. You know, they get gutted, and they get the wood and tile on the inside, and the bathrooms get upgraded to make everything ADA compliant. That sort of stays the same. Some are a little bit more because of the size of the store, a little bit less, but it's all within a, a budget. It's the exterior of the buildings that usually put the hurt on the projects. You know, with the landscaping, landscaping is not cheap either with adding landscaping beds and stuff, you know, and adding stuff like that. But that's not the big concern on most of these. It's, it usually ends up into the material that we have to do on the buildings. I've been working with them now for about three years, and I have seen them on very few occasions where they, it just didn't work out, where they have walked away just because.
We understand.
There was no give or take on either, they were sort of stuck in the middle, so.
Thank you. Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you.
We have design standards in Eden Prairie that we passed just last year. Is that not right?
Correct.
Mr. Getchell? And we have a list of acceptable building materials, period, and percentage of glass, which you have no problems with in Arby's. But, you know, we've very carefully gone over what we want, and that's not from your, just yours, it's from every other fast food dining place, and every other building, and office building, and anything that's in the type of zoning that's not residential. And I don't think that's allowed in our list, is it, Mr. Getchell, what he was talking about?
I believe so. I mean, I guess that's correct.
Your honor, Councilmember Nelson, I can speak to that a little bit. With regard to the materials, we require 75% Class 1 materials, and the EPAS does not fit in that category. So as long as they could maintain the 75% Class 1, we can look at different variations of brick and stone and glass within there, if there's price differentiations there. But with regard to the EPAS, they would be limited to no more than 25% per facade, and it is our preference to see that in upper levels, because it tends to be a softer material that's subject to readily, readily to damage. So we do have concern with that. It is something we took a very close look at, because we do know you can do things with it that may get more aesthetically pleasing, but it's still structurally isn't the, doesn't have the same permanence as those other materials.
And we also have some standards for plantings around, which I think they already meet. You know, they might want to change which kind of plants on their business decision, but, you know, we spent a lot of time looking at this. We hold everybody to the same design, and I'm not prepared to change it for anyone. If we change it for one, we'll have to change it for everyone. That will put a lot of work and basically a whole council decision to keep it at that level.
Councilmember Norah.
I have one question. If you have to cut the cost and if you had to remove the walkway, how somebody, is it possible for somebody to walk from the mall to Arby's? Or do they have to drive?
Even as of right now, there is no really way to walk to Arby's.
So you have to drive?
There, yeah, you would have to drive into it. I mean, now, you could walk in on the driveway, but there is no actual sidewalk on any of the perimeters there around that particular area.
So somebody with a wheelchair, probably very difficult to go from mall to Arby's and back or something?
Yeah, well, right now, there would be even no way for them at this point now, once the remodeling or the upgrades are done to the other side, there's probably going to be sidewalks there. But at this point, there is, on where we're connecting, where we're supposed to connect it to, there isn't even a sidewalk there at that point yet. So right now, there is no way for anybody to even get to where what we would be putting in without driving into our parking lot anyway.
Okay. Thank you.
And I do understand with the bricks, I was just answering, and I understand that the brick's probably going to have to stay. I just was answering the question as to where the cost overruns are and stuff from what our normal projects are and stuff. So that, I wasn't asking for permission, I just answering questions, because I do know that that's one of our major cost overruns on this particular project, but.
Appreciate you being here.
Yeah, but we already sort of figured we was going to have to stay with the, the bricks all the way around, but just answering the questions.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Freiber.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm going to go back to this brick. I understand about our standards, but I also understand, too, about the importance of a strong business community itself. I would really like to see a negotiation going on to see what can be done with that, but keeping within line what our intent is. Going by the aspect that we're Eden Prairie, this is what we want. Going by the aspect that we're Eden Prairie, this is what we want, eh, that's going to have some kind of a problem with me off on that. Because what we don't need is, we don't need fewer businesses. We need good, healthy businesses. And I think our obligation as a council is to work with you and give you tools as much as that we can go, as long as the other party itself is also given in as far as to find this middle ground. Most, most problems are going to be solved that way off on it. And I would like to, you know, staff to look at that aspect, and I'd also like you to look at, you know, as far as that aspect to see what can be done and the council to consider it.
Thank you. I just want to point out at this early stage that until we actually get a consensus vote, that those are just opinions of each of us as individuals. So I understand that staff heard that, but that's not a council direction yet until we all decide that. So council, Mr. Rosso.
So just to comment a little bit about the process, which is important to what you're, what is being suggested as the roadblocks here. So this is being brought to you under a newer process that the council adopted a couple of years ago to streamline the approval process for certain minor amendments. So it's not an amendment to the zoning, it's not an amendment to their PUD, it's a site plan approval. So the types of changes that are being suggested are matters that, as Ms. Jeremiah identifies, are code required conditions that you don't, that this process doesn't contain the authority for you to vary those conditions without them going through the full process. So reapplication, even if Mr. Freiber's suggestion of sitting down and negotiating, coming to some middle ground was fruitful, if it involved going below the 75%, they'd have to go make application for zoning change, go through the planning commission, a public hearing, come back for a public hearing here. That might be more of a disincentive to doing the project than what they're facing. But, so you, so I want you to keep that in mind as you have the discussions. It, it might be better to give them what they're asking for tonight in their application, to give them that approval. And then if they make the determination they can't do it, they get to have a conversation with staff because they'd have to go through the same process that's being suggested that I just outlined. But if they get their approval tonight, make their analysis, then they don't have to come back to another meeting to get your approval of the plan.
Thank you. I want to give a few comments here as well. So just from a feeling standpoint, Councilmember Freiber, I've always been someone that has, in specific individual neighbor, within a neighborhood, instances of road construction front of the house, I've always been someone that's wanted to try to find those win-wins. When we are in a negotiating situation, this is not one, we are not in a negotiating situation now. This is a developer, I'm sorry, this is a proponent coming to us. Again, with, I thank you for clarifying the abbreviated kind of a process, but this is not the time tonight to begin to hash over changes to our code, which by the way, we have developed painstakingly over 30 years and have arrived at a certain level of quality that we feel as a council has represented the people of Eden Prairie for three decades, as exemplified by Shields, which is coming in with high-quality everything because, why? Because we are a high-quality city, looking at our major center market area, the highest prioritized commercial area really in town, on a primo corner. So if Arby's isn't able to make it on this site, I love Arby's, I don't want you to leave. But if you do, then another great operation comes in and builds the high-quality store there. I would think there are many other types of businesses similar to Arby's that might like to be there. You're on a great site, and I'm thrilled you're there, and I hope you stay, and we welcome the improvements that you will make. It's interesting, people have been asking about our two Burger King sites that are sitting empty, and why can't they be redeveloped and sold? Because Burger King wants them, because they know in this town how primo those sites are, and that they will reinvest and do what they will need, we, we hope, to make those Burger King sites high quality. So the same with Arby's. So I don't want to have this negotiated time tonight. I think this building looks really great the way it has come in. I hope that you're able to make it work. We have talked walkability, walkability, walkability to the mall for 35 years. And we have wanted people, especially our senior citizens, we are an aging community. That's all we talk about is getting sidewalks in to that mall, every opportunity that we can get. This is not the time tonight to give up on that piece of that. We need to grab it every redevelopment opportunity to put a sidewalk in. So I'm, I'm pushing, I'm just myself right now, I'm one vote this evening. I plan to wholeheartedly support this and vote for this tonight, as is. And I hoped, again, in working with staff, that if there are any little tweaks or things that can be done that make sense to the city and are not a detriment to Arby's, fantastic. So I'll let anyone else speak to that. Otherwise, I would certainly at some point here entertain a motion for the rest of the motion.
Yeah, just want to add, I agree with you, you know, that we definitely want new business and existing business grow here. But same times, we cannot change the basic codes for, like Mayor said, a particular resident want the changes. We, it's a very difficult process for us to do that. In my point, I was really excited to see the sidewalk aspect of, that's one thing I read throughout, that wow, it's great, you know? And when I hear today that that may be one of the things, you may have to take it out, I am saddened by that. That I hope you don't have to do it. I would like to see that, like Mayor said. Because think about a senior citizen taking a Southwest Transit bus to the, to the mall, and then from there he had to get a Uber to Arby's to get a sandwich and back, another Uber. It's just very painful if you can imagine the elderly person doing that. So I strongly believe that we do need that pathway, and I know you can figure it out. You guys are really smart.
Any further comments? Otherwise, let's have...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
May I correct a statement in the motion that you're asking for?
Please.
There was a misstatement in the motion in the highlighted area.
Ken.
It is not an amendment to a development agreement. The action tonight is to approve an amendment to the approved site plan and architectural design on 1.14 acres. It's the statement right after B on this item in the annotated agenda before the synopsis. But if someone wants to just move, if someone wants to approve what's been applied for, you could just reference what I've just said.
Oh, I see. Great. So someone want to make a motion to what Mr. Rosso just said?
I hope I just wrote it down.
Approve the site plan.
You can also read what's next to B if you wish, but...
Okay, I'd like to move to direct staff to prepare an amendment to the site plan and architectural design, incorporating staff recommendations and council conditions. Did I get that right?
No, it's to approve the site plan and architectural design. We're actually giving approval to the architectural, to the site plan and architectural designs.
We offered you that option, by the way, and you rejected it, but...
Got it.
Okay, so what Ms. Russell said, you moved it. Is there a second?
I second that.
And Kyle, you'll get that right from Mr. Ah, you're good. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed? Great. Welcome, and we do welcome you, and we're excited, and I like the Arby's roast beef sandwich, so I don't want you to go away. So make this work, and we're excited to have you continue here. Excellent. Sounds good. Well, I wish you well in that endeavor as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening. All right, the third public hearing this evening is the Oak Point Elementary School Parking Lot Edition. Mr. Getcho.
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. You may remember this item from our last council meeting. You received a presentation and an overview from the Eden Prairie School District on the parking lot addition plans at Oak Point Elementary. At that time, you approved a land alteration permit, and you were given, as I just said, a presentation and overview on their plans. The public hearing for that action is needed this evening. So we are back again with this item tonight. I see that the school district representatives are here to answer any questions that you may have or follow-up. I do not think it was their intent or staff's intent to do another presentation again because I believe the council has the information on the plans for the parking lot. But this is a public hearing, and the council will need to take action on a resolution for site plan review following the public hearing.
So council, what's your pleasure? We could open up the public hearing and have anyone speak, and then close it, and then have our conversation. We could ask some questions now. What would you all like?
I would like to hear anybody in the audience who has any statements first.
Just close it and then keep it, the rest of it going?
Yeah, we did go through a fairly extensive discussion last month, but if there are residents that have input into this, I'd like to hear it.
So this is a public hearing. Anyone in the audience wishing to address the council on this issue tonight? Seeing none, is there a motion just to close the public hearing?
Move the motion to close the public hearing.
For second?
Second.
In discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed. All right. Council, would you like to ask any more questions, make comments? I have a few comments myself. I'll wait till last again, unless you want me to go now.
I've got one question. I talked to Mr. Getcho about it. Is there any possibility that the stormwater basin be instead a rain garden? Will that do what it would do where it could be something the kids could study and it would be out there, but I don't know if it would absorb enough water or not? But it seems like an ideal place for that if it would in fact work.
Thank you, councilmembers. Jay Palmeroy with Anderson Johnson Associates, landscape architect. The basin is essentially acting as a rain garden. It's planted with seed or sod versus plants, but that's how it's acting. During a storm event or right after a storm event, it will have standing water, but that water has to be released within 72 hours. So it'll be dry for most of the year, most of the summer, but that's essentially how a rain garden works as well.
Is there any reason not to make it a traditional rain garden where in fact the public could see that kind of thing? School children could study how things like that work, be a little more hands-on for the kids?
We looked at that. We're trying to, it's a fairly low basin, being that it's on an elementary school, so not treating it as a formal basin, but having it, again, not manicured, but to have it mowed. What we oftentimes find on school sites is, especially with rain gardens where those plants are both drought tolerant and able to be flooded, they're oftentimes tough to maintain. So on a Honeywell site or a 3M site where maintenance folks are easy to come by, sometimes school sites don't get quite the same attention.
What were the, can I just cut in here too as well?
No, I'm with Ann.
What were, what were the alternatives that you looked at when the watershed district came to you and said, "We need you to capture not just the water to filter it, but also to capture the volume of water"? So what were the alternatives besides this infiltration pond?
And some of this is getting over my head. My engineers are back at the office. But we did have to go through as part of the city process and part of the watershed process. The alternatives that we looked at were porous pavers, we looked at underground stormwater or chambers, we looked at underground stormwater and irrigation reuse, we looked at ponding, and then smaller certainly rain gardens to capture the water instead of the large one we have.
And any of them costed out or considered or looked at as, and which came out like close, or what was your potential plan B or?
Because of, and again, this is where it's getting a little over my head, because we have such heavy soils out there, different than we might have out at the Central Middle School, for instance, beautiful sands. Out there at Oak Point, it's heavy clay soils. So the requirement to infiltrate, seems almost backward, but infiltrating into heavy clay soils is a requirement. We have to infiltrate the first inch of water that flows off the parking lot into that pond. So we're bringing in a soil medium to allow for that infiltration. It fills up, it goes out a drain tile in a filtered state, and then back into the storm sewer system. The, the cost for any one of those, the porous pavers, those have an infiltration system below it, so the water filters through. But in that case, it's, again, whether it's a maintenance issue or just because it's, the depth on it has to be such that we are getting into, again, the heavy clay soils. And it's, it's not a system that can be maintained over time. It would be reconstructed over time if it's not maintained properly. So we did look at certainly any one of those. The irrigation rain or the irrigation reuse system for, using rainwater for irrigation, we looked at that, but again, the cisterns would be so huge to provide irrigation around the campus. It just wasn't, not only economical, but spatially, it just didn't work.
So in a heavy rainstorm, and I found out today, anything over 1.1 inches with the watershed going into this ponding area would fill it to a capacity of three inches. When does it overflow out of there directly into the river? At what level?
I don't know. That part of it, I know most of our, we have to prove out two, 10, and 100-year storms. Typical storm retention is a 100-year storm, which we seem to get every couple of years.
Well, that's, that's more my question, that I found out that 90, this, this is being built to contain 90% of the rainfalls of current year. So going forward, we can make a guess that it's going to not meet that standard. But of those 10%, it only takes a 1.1-inch rainfall to overflow it, meaning that we've had two- and three- and four-inch rainfalls. And at that point, water stays in that pond. That's where I wanted to know at what point does it siphon out just directly untreated right into the creek? And then even though water's supposed to be gone within 48 hours, in a severe rainfall, it might not, depending on the outflow capacity, meaning that there's standing water with kids on that playground, possibly occasionally?
No, it, it needs to be released in that timeframe. The watershed and the city have very strict guidelines in how we design this. The pond right now is actually designed in accordance with state rules and even the watershed rules. We've designed it to twice as large as it has to be right now. Until we get into the soils and truly test, the watershed requires in situ testing to verify that in a heavy clay soil, it's 0.6 inches per hour infiltration. Right now, it's designed for 0.3, so it's twice as big as it has to be. I would love to say that we're going to reduce it in size by half. That'd be great, but we, we couldn't design it to that because that's the requirement.
And you're only capturing water on the new parking lot. The lower parking lot currently goes right into the creek, right?
We are, we're catching the water from the new parking lot, and I want to say there's a portion of the other paved surfaces that is also being accounted for. So we're, we're treating some of the other pavement, you know?
And the upper parking lot just goes right into the creek?
It does. Some of the bus, but where the turnaround goes or the hard-surface play area, that drains into the storm sewer that goes into the new detention pond.
Any other questions, just on the pond?
Yeah, I do. So is there any risk that kids could fall off into the pond and water high?
I'm not going to stand up here in a public forum and say no, but it's a, it's a, it's a low basin that will have standing water in it after a rainfall.
And so from the pond, how close is the kids would be playing or activities?
60, 80 feet.
60?
60 or 80 feet, yeah.
Is there any guarding, anything around the pond?
No, and there's two...
This concern came up, somebody else, I just thought of this. Just wondering if somebody else thought of this idea or concern, that maybe any potential safety issue?
There's two ways of looking at it, and we design, that's our, our business is school design, whether it's high schools, middle school, most of the schools are elementary schools. Two philosophies, either you fence it in... Two philosophies, either you fence it in so the kids can't get in, or kids being kids or teenagers being teenagers, they do get in and then it's tough to get in to get them out. So most schools elect not to put fencing around. On a standing water pond, there's vegetation that grows in and around it, cattails, what have, or what have you, that kind of protect against that errant child wandering in there. But most of the elementary schools have detention areas, ponds, whatever.
So what we're doing is a common practice, so many feet away from and around our other cities and other schools.
Sure, oh yeah.
Something we are not doing, cutting corners, or we are not getting closer to the pond and there is a potential safety issue?
And actually, this is, I think, an improvement over the years where the standard used to be put at an open water pond. The pollutants filter down to the bottom. Every few years, you excavate that out or dredge it out. In this case, these are essentially dry basins. Immediately after a storm, they fill up, but they slowly subside.
So 1856, Reese, man named Mr. Reese started a Reese pottery factory right there on the shores of Purgatory, on the ground that was up about where the field is today, to use the clay. But they found the clay inferior and they actually found shards of pottery when they built Oak Point all over the hillside just from that original pottery factory. So my fear, do you have any sense that if you got in there and you found the clay was even more clay, then you anticipated that this could grow larger in order to get your .06 or whatever drainage capacity?
No, the clay is the clay is the clay. That will always be there. The medium that we're importing above the clay, it's a three-foot depth of sand compost mix. That is our infiltration filtration media.
How deep do you have to go then to get that in there? Like you're three feet down now, I think, or from the hill, you know, whatever. How deep do you have, then do you have to go like another two to three feet with sand?
Right, there's about three feet of the sand compost.
So have you read the history study with Sonic? They did some studies up there and they found the old foundation to the barn that was belonging to the Blum Farm, Brum, sorry, B-R-U-M, Brum Farm. And in fact, the tree-lined street going down was the road to their house, their farmhouse. And there's a huge H foundation of concrete that's about 80 feet by 35 feet or so. It's in an H right in the middle of that playground. I kind of feel like you'll hit it when you go down there. What happens if you do?
It's a hidden condition and we'll have to address it.
You'll deal with it, okay. I have a few more questions just about the parking lot, but any of you have?
Can I just?
With the pond, go ahead.
Yep.
So it's, our city manager's just clarified my question, that in that water only stand 72 hours?
I believe so.
So if something really bad happened, has to happen within the 72-hour period of time. After that, it's all dried out.
Correct. I mean, if we get, if like this summer was horrible where we got, it seemed like we'd get a rain on Monday and a Thursday and a Sunday and a Wednesday. So in that case, it's working overtime.
We don't have a problem with the environment.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. And as you're walking back, I'll just say that it's the, our watershed district, which we have our codes, they have their now rules, and they have total power to enact their codes under state law. And they are no longer permitting only water filtering. They want water, they want the capacity of volume to be reduced, which is great. I mean, it's a great goal across all of Minnesota, which is a sponge, to try to limit water going down the Mississippi River. To do it at commercial sites or land that's undeveloped, I think is a lot easier than going into Oak Point, which has 4.4 acres of existing playground field and demanding that huge water capacity, you know, infiltration system be put in there. So I have a couple parking lot questions. If I know who would come up and answer those?
Anything else?
All right. So having worked there 21 years with a larger school population, at one point, we were, I think, larger than the 1,500 there now. And you could argue fifth, sixth building, we might have had more staff. So we never had the need for 85 additional staff parking places. I'm assuming it's because of the volunteer heavy capacity possibly at the Spanish immersion school? Is that what's driving this right now?
Yeah, good evening, Mayor, council members, city staff. My name is Jason Otzenberger, Executive Director of Business Services for Eden Prairie School District. There's certainly a number of factors that are causing some additional parking. Volunteers are definitely one of those. And I think as we talked about last month, just on event nights, bad weather situations where parents are driving kids more frequently, that's where we're really seeing a lot of volume come into that site. We certainly have a number of staff concerns with just the number of parking spaces for staff as well.
Sure, absolutely.
So the new lot will allow the additional capacity for those staff and then free up our parent pickup and drop-off area for parents.
And were there any other alternatives you looked at for placement of this parking lot?
Absolutely. We looked at a number of different things. We looked at expanding the parking lot on the upper level to try and accommodate more spaces. It's just not the volume of spaces that we need. There's not a lot of available land up there. At that lower site, we looked at placement in many different ways. Turning it horizontal to run along Starling Lake Parkway was our initial idea. That ran into some major cost barriers with some of the things that are in that lower softball field area. And we looked at a number of different kind of shapes and sizes of the parking lot. And this became the most cost-effective way of doing it to gain that 85 spaces.
And wherever you put parking spaces in, the watershed district would have had you account for that water?
Absolutely.
So you would have had this water infiltration basin regardless?
Yeah. Not only watershed, but the city requirements as well.
Depending on where, yes, or square footage, yes, absolutely. Okay, any other questions on the parking lot? Any other questions on anything with this project?
Yeah, I'm just curious, how much space is reduced for the kids to play?
Yeah, I think that would be a great question for one of our principals to come up. Principal Noor, would you come join us up here? Principal Joel Noor with Oak Point Elementary, I think can provide a better answer for that.
I have one more follow-up questions and if I can ask. Is there a, I'm a number guy. Is there a ratio that state, I know it's not part of the city. I understand that. I'm just curious as a grandparent for my granddaughter. Is there a state statute or state guidelines which say if you have a school with 1,000 students and should have this much, this and this and this, this many bathrooms, for example, right? Same thing, playground. I'm just curious where we are.
Interestingly, we're just starting the process on the work on the referendum improvements at Central Middle School and the city doesn't have a requirement on parking. It's typically though based on, on elementary and middle schools where the kids don't drive. It's usually based on the number of classrooms, which kind of back falls onto the number of staff. But it's number of classrooms and/or staff plus some minor percentage. Volunteers are usually taken into account on that as well. So it's, once you get into high schools, it's based on seating capacity in the theater or in the gymnasium or at the stadium. But in elementary, it's, proof of parking is a little bit more difficult.
So that's not my question. My question is ratio in terms of playground versus to the number of students in the school.
That usually, again, I'm not sure if I can answer it, but relates to the number of classrooms. If there's 1,000 students, 25 to 30 students in each classroom, back into that from that point of view. So I don't know if that relates.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, council members, my name is Joel Noor. I'm the principal at Oak Point, one of the two schools that shares the campus. To the question about playground space and how much, I think it's important to remember that the way we schedule when children are out there, it's not 1,600 kids at a time. It's one grade level from one school. Two, one to two grade levels at a time. So you're talking about 150 to 250 kids, depending on the time during the lunch period. We have looked at this for, this is my, I'm going into my seventh year. This has been a conversation that we've had for the last five because of all the problems we have with traffic and parking. It's a significant concern. So little kids that are on this campus, K through six, tend to play on play structures. They tend to play on swings. They tend to play on the basketball courts and the gaga ball pit. We don't see a significant amount of children on a regular basis out in the green space. Do they use it? Yes, at times. So this will reduce the green space, the green fields. But we feel that there is still plenty of space for children that choose to play soccer or play football, those types of things.
So we are within the guidelines of the state or the school board or?
I am not aware of any.
I don't know. Is there any guidelines available at all? I'm just curious.
I'm not aware of any, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll have a little conversation. Do you have anything to say or do we just have some conversation here?
You know, I would, I would just like to add that you're hearing the traffic concern and the number of cars. If you've been around that site, you certainly know that. And it's really a safety issue for not only our students, but our parents and our staff as well. This is going to help alleviate, it's not going to make it go away, but we're trying to mitigate safety. That's our number one concern, safety of our students. This will allow us to shuffle quite a few cars, 85 vehicles, to another spot and free up quite a bit of area for parent pickup and drop-off. And we believe that's really going to enhance the safety of the space in that lower parking area.
Thank you. So I'll just make some comments here. And I want to start by saying I do respect the process that the school district has gone through, that there have been really smart people working at this on all different angles. The watershed district got involved. They absolutely have the best interests of their perspective involved. The parking issue is a perspective that is incredibly important for anyone that tries to drive in another. And I drive by it quite a bit. That's where I live around there. And I can attest to that. I feel like there's three buckets of stakeholders in this process. There's the parking issue, so the people that are deeply, which is parents, teachers, staff, whatever, deeply concerned about the parking issue. There are the environmental issues, which is anybody that's concerned about creek and water, you know, purification, retention, capacity, volume, all that. But then there's the kids. And I feel like the bucket of the kids is getting the short shaft here. I'm going to vote for this tonight. I just want to level set that. But I, working there 21 years, having four kids go through there, using those fields, talking to parents, I've only talked to one parent actually, but I asked that parent to go out and find additional input. And not that you all did not get the parent perspective, I think you did. I believe though that from the kid perspective that, well, let me give you some numbers. You asked about what in the state guidelines. There is the Department of Minnesota Education 2018 November Guide for Planning School Construction. So these are when you build new schools, what's the minimum requirements for land? So they break up the playground areas into apparatus, multipurpose, track and field, general purpose, top off field games, et cetera, right? And then they actually assign certain amount of acreage to a school of 1,000. An average, actually, the average school in Minnesota for elementary is 1,100 students. And they say if you have larger populations, it goes up. If you have smaller, so 1,500 kids, right? 15, 20, I guess it goes up and down, but at Oak Point in the two schools. So one could argue these acreage numbers need to be higher than this. So by the Minnesota State Guidelines, it's 6.84 acres minimum for playground area for a school of 1,100 kids. Oak Point today, we were measuring today, some staff, we were trying to do some work with rulers and trying to figure that out. And so base, this is a little bit rough, but it's close. Today, the play area is 4.4 acres. And working there for 21 years, I always had heard that we were under. And I sensed that as a sixth-grade teacher. We were five and six. Granted, your building is going to have K to five now. I get that. So 4.4 acres. Depending on how you delineate and demarcate the infiltration pond in the parking lot, it's about 2 to 2.5 acres, leaving 1.98 acres for 1,500 kids playground area. Now, I'm going to vote for this tonight, but I want to level set and I want parents to hear. And I want the school board really to think about too. How much did they dig deeply into recognizing the impact on kids? I get the parking impact. I get the environmental impact. But slashing down 4.4 acres in half, in essence, and leaving the school, this school with 27% of the recommended play area based on Minnesota State Guidelines, I don't find easy to accept. I just don't. But at the end of the day, my job today, I wear a hat of mayor, but I also wear a hat of resident, citizen, retired teacher, parent of four kids have gone through Oak Point. I know very well this particular school site. So I wear those different hats. But tonight, I'm voting as a member of this council. And I'm going to respect the process a lot because I think we're pretty hamstrung. I don't know that we have a lot of alternatives. We're shoehorning a lot of action into this small site. Decisions were made eight to 10 years ago that are driving still implications that we're still dealing with today. And that, we can't mitigate or change. So just letting you know, I'm going to vote for it. I wanted to get on record all of my concerns and I do have them. And I just wanted the public to know that as well. And if they have continued concerns about the use of this site, especially when it deals with educational programming, that's the school board. And I would encourage them to go back to their school board representatives. So with that, anybody else have any comments? And I will be ready to entertain a motion.
I would like to say it meets the environmental regulations. The parking has been a problem, but in truth, it's been passed by the school board. At least I assume it's been passed by the school board. And they are an elected group of their own's dealing with the schools. It's more of, a little more of a rubber stamp coming here. I don't see anything terribly wrong with it. I'm a little concerned about the school park size as well, but that's really the school board's issue. So I plan to vote for this. And I assume at some point, if it's not working, the PTO or something in the school will tell you about it.
All right. Is there a motion just for that second bullet point?
Yeah, I move the motion to adopt a resolution for site plan review on 23.05 acres.
Your second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Great. Good luck on all that. Wish you the best. We truly do. We serve all the same constituents. So thank you so much for all the work you do.
Thank you.
Our last public hearing is the Southwest Transit Garage Building Edition. Thank you so much for being patient and waiting.
Yes, Mayor, we have Southwest Transit before us again to do an upgrade in addition to their garage at 14405 62nd Street West, located on, just near Indian Chief Road. There is an existing 100,256-square-foot maintenance garage with warehouse and office space. The applicant, Southwest Transit, is proposing to add 2,689 square feet, a square foot two-story addition on the front of the building. The first story would be a bus entry and the second story is office space. I see our friends with Southwest Transit are here to provide you with a presentation and overview of their proposal. We have a public hearing that is required and the staff and Southwest Transit could answer any questions that the city council may have.
Hi, good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Gary Haave, principal at Haadob's Architects, 2324 University Avenue in St. Paul. So tonight, we'd like to give you a little overview of the proposed project. So on the screen before you is the site plan for the proposed project. And I think just backing up a little bit, this is kind of a phase two for this site. We came before you, actually beginning in about August of last year, and we received a PUD amendment in January of this year for parking enhancements and improvements. a PUD amendment in January of this year for parking enhancements and improvements to the site. At that time, we weren't sure of the actual situation with the Southwest Light Rail Transit Way and whether or not that would proceed. That was a little bit in question. So we did not bring the building addition forward in our last amendment. But what we did do is we worked closely with city staff and with the Nine Mile Creek Watershed District to take into consideration the amount of impervious surface that would be required on this site for the addition, so that should the addition go forward, which is what we're proposing now, all those approvals would be in place. So what we're really here to talk about is the actual building addition. All the site planning review was taken care of in our last amendment, how we're handling the stormwater, that has already been approved. So with this project, I remember that the little button doesn't work here very well on the screens, but the sort of peach colored area on the site plan, that's the new parking that was just installed at the site. We just got substantial completion within the last week, just in time for the state fair and to alleviate on-street parking, which this project will do for the increased number of drivers on this space. So accommodating special events was the first part of the site plan. The second part of the site plan was really having to do with Light Rail Transit Way taking Southwest Transit's corporate office and a decision by Southwest Transit Commission to move all the facilities into one location and to really be able to consolidate operations and make a much more efficient administrative operation on the single site, which is the garage located on West 62nd and Indian Chief Road. So we are, on this project, it's a little over 10-acre site, and the building, as Mr. Getchell had pointed out, is just over 100,000 square feet. The point I'd like to make about the building addition is that we're only increasing the footprint of the building by just over 700 square feet. Most of the 2,600 square foot addition actually occurs on the second floor of the building or on the first floor in space that is already constructed. So what this project will do, you can see in the sort of magenta colored long stripe, that would be the new bus entry into the garage. And then we're also adding a new pedestrian visitor entry, driver's entry, just to the east of the building addition. Other pieces of the remodeling that will take place is that when the garages to the west of the original building were constructed, they were constructed without floor drains. So there's issues to the building about, you know, when the buses come in in the winter time, snow melts, how do we get rid of the snow melts? We're adding new floor drains in the project. We're adding a new restroom in the maintenance area. And then you can see the bus entry, and so where the bus entry comes into Garage C, that's the largest single bus storage area of the bus garage. Today, the only way you can get in and out of the bus garage is by either pulling in from the south or backing in from the south. So this new bus entryway is a necessity so we can reduce the amount of damage and increase efficiencies so that buses can pull in and then in a couple stalls, they can just back in. But for the most part, it becomes a drive-through situation like the other garages. So the major component on the first floor is the new bus entry on the north side. We're adding an elevator to the second floor office space, and that's going to, you know, assist in addressing accessibility needs, here we go, in the project. So here, on this next page, you can see the bus entry on the far sort of northwest corner. We're doing some tactical remodelings in some of the existing office areas. We're adding a new stairway. And then, as I noted, we're adding an elevator that would get us up to the second floor. Second floor is primarily administrative offices. There's men's and women's restrooms. And there's an existing mezzanine over the existing bus wash, and we're going to convert that mezzanine into a training facility. So now all training can be onsite. No training will have to be done either in segments or offsite, but we'll be able to accommodate all the drivers in a single room, single facility at the site. So again, it's really about increasing efficiency and increasing operational performance for the facility. For those of you who know the building, there's an existing one-story office building sort of tucked onto the north facade. Most of the existing sort of bus garage area is double T precast concrete structures. You can see those vertical lines in the right-hand photograph. In front of that is the existing office space, which is an exposed aggregate precast concrete panel. In effect, the design today meets your current standards. The building design at the ground floor is glass and precast concrete, but the fact is it's really not very attractive and it doesn't really reflect the Southwest Transit brand or the Eden Prairie community. We focused on that main, primary area, which you can see highlighted in the proposed north elevation in the bottom of the slide. And so we've worked very closely with staff. I wish Beth would have stayed around because I wanted to thank her for all her hard work with us in making this project possible. But the building really looks at, so at the north bus garage, we're going to have dark brick, which is a type one material. We're replacing at the ground floor the existing glass windows, providing newer, more energy-efficient windows. Over that exposed aggregate precast base, we're using a zinc flatlock metal panel. You've seen that on other buildings here in town. The Optum building uses a similar product to that. And while the metal panel is a type two and we're proposing it on the ground, it does in fact overlay on the precast, so technically, we still have a type one material at the ground level at the front of the building. We've mixed up the materials a little bit, so while we're using substantially, you know, metal panels, flatlock panels, we're going from a zinc panel to what's called a Core Ten metal panel, which gives you kind of a little rusty look. And then the main portion of the office segment will be a smooth metal panel. It will not be orange and red, it will be black and green, but it was an example that we took for this particular slide. You can start to see here a little bit in the elevation that the front part of the building is a little bit lower than the back part. So we wanted to articulate, just like the existing building, a variety of building heights. And in the back portion of the building, that extra high parapet also acts as the screen for the mechanical equipment that sits up on top of that roof. So we've really worked hard with your staff to make sure that we meet all the guidelines and the material selections for the building. This is sort of extending that elevation view. If you're driving by on County Road 62 and you're looking into the site, you'll start to get a glimpse of the building as you approach it. One of the things that's unique about this particular site that we didn't point out in the site plan is really the southeast corner of the site is really a much lower but industrial-use properties. The railway goes through back there. The rest of the site is burned, and then we've got a golf course on the south side of 62, and we've got a couple of greens on the west side as well. But this gives you a little bit of view of what this building will look like from Highway 62, and as you start to pull in and you get into the parking lot, there you can kind of see we're pulling those Southwest Transit colors into the smooth metal panels on the taller portions of the buildings. And we're articulating not only the heights of the buildings, but also the overhangs on the building to create some other unique shadow lines. And so I think with that, I'll open it up to any questions that you have.
Council, any questions?
Yeah. I just a comment, I'd like to thank you for working so hard with staff and various materials to make this look like a very nice building. Not that making a bus garage is the easiest building to make look interesting, but I think you've done a good job, and I appreciate your effort.
Definitely. PG?
Yeah, also, I want to say, I'm the part of the council commission board member, and I've seen the plan, and I'm very excited. It looks, the new plan looks like really great compared to existing building, and we truly understand the need for this, so it's great work.
And exciting to be bringing everything together. They've been spread around quite a bit, and it wasn't necessarily their first choice to leave their current site, put Southwest Metro at the, what are we calling that whole area there, but whatever, where the LRT's coming in. But this is nice to have everything brought together. So any other final questions or comments? So this is a public hearing that we need to open up. Not sure if, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to this issue? Ward, please, come on. No, no. For those listening on TV, we have left with only Southwest Transit staff and city staff, so I believe we can proceed on. Is there a motion then, council?
Move to close the public hearing and adopt the resolution for the site plan review on 23.05 acres. Oh, that's the wrong one.
No, actually, it says it. Did it get written wrong?
It's got the wrong acre, John.
Let me go and find it.
It's the wrong, I read, right?
Oh, yeah, it was written wrong. If you go into your packet, somebody go into the packet and read it off the packet. Just go to the Southwest Transit Garage.
I can approve the first reading of an ordinance for the planned unit development district review on 10.05 acres and direct staff to prepare development agreement incorporating staff and commission recommendations and council conditions.
Would somebody besides our city manager move that motion?
I moved that motion what the city manager said.
I seconded it, too.
All right. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. All right. Thank you for that. So we are down to payment of claims. Thank you so much. Excited about what you're doing there. Share that news with Lynn Semig. I'm sure he'll be pleased. Payment of claims, is there a motion?
I move to approve the payment of claim as submitted.
Is there a second?
Second.
That's not part of the motion. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Freiberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Ryan?
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Case?
Aye. All right. We have no ordinance. Okay, so reports. I just have something, I realize the somewhat lateness of time here. I just wanted to bring to the level of just public attention and all of you, I'm not looking for anything this evening, I'm not necessarily looking for a lot of conversation. I just want you to know, this is some thoughts I'm thinking. So, after the mass shootings, two, in a 24-hour period last weekend, and across the nation, people calling, I guess the Ohio chant that went viral to their governor was do something, do something, in that sense that what are local officials, county officials, state officials, federal officials? We all have things we cannot do, and I'm going to comment on that briefly. And then there are some areas, I think we have some conversation in a very limited way in terms of some policy. Nothing, I'll just start this off just to relax or whatever, I don't know, it doesn't relax anybody, but this is not about gun control, this is not about guns really, it's more about the policy of dealing with proactively heading off mass shootings or being prepared, sadly, for them. So, let me just say, there's four buckets I see of consideration when it comes to this whole gun issue. One is just the regulation of guns, that's at a federal level, I'm not addressing that this evening. The second is the public safety issue of police response in the moment to an event like that. I, I'm not discussing that this evening, I have full confidence, I think we have the best police department around, I know that they prepare regularly in that event, I know they would act the very best that possibly could in that moment. The third is the infrastructure or the hardening proactively of structures. So I know the school district with their new bond referendum, they're looking at that. We raised that at the last meeting to have staff come back over the next several meetings, I think maybe at the next meeting or the one after that in September. They're coming back with some considerations. The pieces that we can deal with as a city are our city infrastructure facilities and considering public access. There's a whole lot of conversation there that we have to have yet, but that's that third bucket, the infrastructure structure piece, the hardening of that itself. Okay, the fourth is what I want to raise tonight, and that's this area of how do we proactively, in a public safety sense, think about ahead of time when we have groups of people gathering? How do we prepare in the event of something like that? My thought, let me give two examples. We had the Fourth of July that I was at from about 10:00 AM in the morning until 10:00 PM at night. We had tremendous police presence, they were wonderful, and we had all kinds of reserve officers and public safety, and we had cement barriers up, just a whole lot of pre-planning, fantastic. The discussion that I want us, not tonight, I want us just to begin as a community, at what point do we sadly move into that next step of, basically like the airport, where we've chosen to give some freedoms up in exchange for some type of safety? Maybe it's a perceptual sense of safety, but when you see guards at the airport with long arms standing as you're walking towards the security gate, things have changed. So how much do we as a city, at a Fourth of July event, prepare for that? The police officers were fantastic, but they were clustered right back around a command vehicle. A couple of times, I took walks with two or three, but during the evening with 15,000 people there, if a shooter had started at the front of it, the police would have gotten there in 10 seconds, but a whole lot of damage could have occurred before that. So do we as a policy, as a council, begin to have a conversation, how can we be proactive about that? We just had our people fest, and there, I know that there were police officers around in terms of driving vehicles, but we did not intentionally, because we didn't sell alcohol there, we did not have the police presence of standing there. There's no blame here at all. It's the conversation, do we as a council want to begin to, and again, I'm really sad to even be having to deal with this, but proactively think ahead of time? Do we want police presence more so? There may be a money cost, right? There's a staffing cost, there's all kinds of issues connected and associated with this, but that's the discussion, I think. And again, I keep saying, I am really sad to even be having it. That's the discussion, I think, communities and schools and churches and malls need to be having across this nation, do they prepare by arming, basically, and that's presence of police officers in most cases, ahead of time to prepare for that? That's all I'm going to say tonight. If you want to add anything, you can, but I guess my thoughts are that, we'll get Brad back here and we'll begin to, maybe as we go forward over the next weeks or months, have a conversation. I just don't want us to be looking back after an event and be thinking we could have or should have done more. If we had had a person at that spot or if we'd had more police presence, I don't want that. If you're doing all that you can and you look back and say we did all that we could do, then I, as a mayor, I take on, you know, some heavy responsibility of thinking about how can we keep our people safe? That's the whole reason for this conversation tonight, and I know as a council, we feel that as well. So, I'll be quiet for a moment. If anybody wants to say anything, fine, I'm not looking for anything, though.
Can I add one?
Please.
One thought is, I think because of all things happening, that we do need to look at the internal policies or procedure or whatever the, you know, like you were saying, in a large crowd situation happening in Eden Prairie somewhere, what is our policy today? Review that policy and update it, whatever the police chief and their staff say, whatever that is, but I think it's time for us to... that is, but I think it's time for us to look at it, because all bad things happening around the world, around the US.
That's what I'm asking. And again, just to underscore, our police are doing fantastic right now with the direction that we're giving them, you're amazing. But I'll give an example, when I was at the mayor's conference a month and a half ago, every mayor talked about, every council meeting has two police officers, not that you're not adequate at all, but they, there are reasons, there are policy decisions why you would have two, not one. Little things like that, that do we want to have that kind of conversation? There's an expense to that, there's a capacity at planning to that, I mean, but these are just topics that I think are coming to the surface, again, very, very unfortunately and sadly across this nation right now, and that's the conversation I'd like us to have at some point. Anybody else before we move to adjourn? Okay, I will entertain.
That case, I move to adjourn the city council meeting today.
All right, you've been making a lot of motions tonight, I'm really impressed.
Brad is not here.
Brad's not here. Is there a second? Any discussion, all those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Meeting adjourned.